Good morning, everyone. Seeing all three Commissioners present, I will call to order the August 14th meeting, Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. I will ask Tony and Art Combs to lead us in the fledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'd like to start the meeting with a moment of silence. Recently, two county employees, both from our Assets and Infrastructure Department, passed away. Many of you may know them. Sharon Collin had been with the county for 20 years, most recently as the Director of our County Fleet. Joe Batista was a member of Assets and Infrastructure as well. He was a dedicated automotive technician and was with us for 13 years. We deeply mourn their loss. Our hearts are especially with the entire team at A&amp;I and all of those who worked with these members of our county family. And some of you may have been at their services and they were deeply involved in the community and the county as well. We wanted to share two places that you could support should you like to make memorial contributions. Sharon's family kindly requests that anything be made to the Montgomery County Hero Fund, which she co-founded with her husband Sean. And Joe's family has requested that any memorial contributions be made in memory to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, which is at AFSP.org. But, you know, I want to thank everyone in the county who showed up for their families and friends at this difficult time. And please join us in a moment of silence for them. So we'll start this meeting with our opening remarks with an update on the state budget. So many of you may know we're six weeks into the state's fiscal year. Unfortunately, we're still at an impasse. There are a number of things that are very important to us in the county. Of course, we've talked about SEPTA, and that's a major part of the budget discussion right now. SEPTA is unfortunately on track to see significant cuts in service as soon as August 24th, which is a little over a week. We're hoping that this budget issue will be resolved before then because that, those cuts will significantly affect Montgomery County. We'll see dramatic drop in service on regional rail and complete elimination, in fact, at the end of the year and in January. Speaking to people this morning, I think it's starting to kick in that they're not going to be able to get to work. They're going to have to figure out other ways to get there. Traffic is going to get worse on 76, if you can imagine. So, you know, we are advocating and we ask everyone listening to advocate for funding SEPTA so that we can maintain the service in regional rail. And of course, the next conversation is how do we do better? But beyond SEPTA, there's actually several other issues worth mentioning, particularly in our Department of Human Services. So there are about $24 million at stake in this quarter alone. That includes our Office of Aging Services, which has a $2.6 million Human Services Block Grant, which, among other things, provides over 100,000 meals to members of our senior population who need the most. We have a $1.7 million grant for drug and alcohol prevention programs. There are 20,000 people served across the county through those grants. We have 10,000 children and families who are fostered or receive support from our Office of Children and Youth. There's a $5.6 million grant at stake there. There are 2,500 people who receive either developmental disability or mental health support. There's a $10 million grant there that's at stake, and funds for shelter services that house 100 people at any given time. And that's just this quarter. So if we don't see the budget passed, we're going to have to make some hard decisions at the local level of whether we stop those services or whether we find temporary measures. And they're not easy decisions. So, you know, we're really advocating for Harrisburg to come together, and really, they shouldn't leave until they pass the budget. So please contact all of your local... But right there. So, yeah, there are many, many other folks who are going to be involved in our OISP office as well, and we like to thank you. And then I'd like to introduce our new Director of External Affairs, Erin Boyle, who's here. Thank you, Erin. Everyone give her a welcome. Erin's been a longtime Monco resident, and she's worked in state and local government for 25 years as an advisor, as a staffer in bipartisan administrations, worked in the governor's team on economic development, a number of different issues. And she'll be leading our External Affairs Office along with Thomas and Judy, who are here. Judy's usually sitting around. But Thomas, Judy, and Jayson. And the goal here is that we collaborate effectively with 62 towns and municipalities, with our state and local representatives in Harrisburg and Washington, 50 police departments, 22 school districts, to make sure that we can best serve everybody in Montgomery County. And there are so many instances where there's millions of dollars in federal or state grants that we can tap into if we effectively leverage our relationships. And so really excited to have Erin on the team and, you know, help us continue to build on that effort. So thank you and welcome, welcome to the county. So finally, last week was National Night Out, and I'll let my colleagues speak to it as well, but I had the chance to be in Lansdale for some Plymouth and Laurin Marion this year, and it was really great to see all of our first responders, law enforcement, come out and get to build their relationships with members of the community and get to show the work that they're doing. So thank you for all who participated, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Wyder.
Thanks. Good morning, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well this morning. Everyone doing okay?
All right.
All right. We need a little more energy than that. It's almost the weekend. So first, I'd like to talk about our Back to School Supply Drive. It's still collecting donations through August 22nd. You can donate in person to county buildings across the county. You can also order items on Amazon Wish List, and they will be shipped directly to the county. To everyone who has already participated, I just want to send a special thank you for helping our county's kids get the best start to the new school year. You know, a couple nights ago, I was ordering my school supplies for my soon-to-be new kindergartner, who will start on the 25th in the Norris County Area School District. And I couldn't help but think how fortunate I am that I can purchase school supplies for him. And there are so many kids across the county and families that cannot. And so this School Supply Drive really does help support families. And Commissioner Mccasian and I were in Pottstown yesterday. As an example, the communities, Pottstown Communities of Faith, had done a headphone drive for the Pottstown School District. They needed 1,900 headphones for kids that couldn't purchase them on their own. And so I want to commend them for the work that they're doing and a bunch of organizations across the county to make sure that all the students have an opportunity to have a great school year with the supplies that they need. Tomorrow, Commissioner DeBello will be at the Emmanuel Lutheran Church in Pottstown to help Valley Forge Tourism with their Freedom from Hunger Kitchen Takeover. They don't want me in the kitchen, but I will be there because I'm not a good cook. But we will be serving meals to our friends and neighbors in need and promoting the launch of their 11th Annual Freedom from Hunger Drive. I'd like to invite Monco residents to get involved and help support Valley Forge Tourism's annual food drive. Every year, they work to raise money for the Monco Anti-Hunger Network, and all proceeds support the work of MON in distributing high-quality food across their network, food pantries in Montgomery County. And so they accept monetary donations, and community businesses will be donating a percentage of their sales to MON. So I look forward to doing that tomorrow with Commissioner DeBello. Next, we have our August Way to Go winners. I have the honor of introducing some of these fine county employees, and I see some of them over to my left. So first up, Kathy. Kathy Bullen. I've had the chance to get to know Kathy personally, and she hails from Konchahaken and has such great pride in all things Konchahaken, especially the St. Patty's Day Parade, right, Kathy? Okay, yeah, that's a good parade. So but in all seriousness, the Office of, she's from the Office of Aging Services within HHS. Kathy's coworkers say she is a true team player. She's taken on tasks outside of her regular duties in stride, and she's always there to support her colleagues that need extra help. So I want to thank you, Kathy, for all the hard work that you do in your county. Next up, we have Matt Henauer. Is that, did I pronounce that? Okay, I saw you, so Senior Counterclerk with our Clerk of Courts. And Matt, I've seen you at the counter, and you're always there with a smile. So congrats to you. Matt's coworkers say he's consistently brought a kind and positive attitude to his work. And especially when people are coming to the Clerk of Courts, it's not always their brightest moment when they're there at your office. Your colleagues say you're a great listener who provides help with complex issues, and you often go above and beyond your standard duties to help the team and residents you work with. So thank you, Matt, for all that you do. Next is Jane. I see you in the corner there, Jane. Jane is our Research and Performance Officer, EO Officer, on the Workforce Development Team within our Commerce Department. And I've gotten to know Jane and her work as well. Jane's colleagues say above, she goes above and beyond, and that doesn't even describe who you are as a colleague. She makes sure our county programs comply with funding requirements. She manages social media pages and creates all outreach materials. Jane is known statewide for her expertise in managing information in the Commonwealth's workforce development system. That is our statewide system of record. And back in May, she staffed a job there in Chester that supported all employees impacted by Crozier Health System closure. And that was 105 Monco residents. And so thank you, Jane, for all the work that you do for Montgomery County. And two additional employees that are equally important but not here. We have Paloma Martinez. She's a Senior District Court Clerk in our District Court 38-1-15. Paloma has earned her place as one of the youngest senior clerks in the county. She brings a professional and knowledgeable approach to her work and shares that wisdom with staff. She remains cool under pressure and always provides essential translation services for our non-English-speaking clients. So thank you, Paloma. We're grateful for your service as well. And last but not least, Kathleen Paris, who is in performance and planning. She's a specialist there for the Office of Performance and Planning with HHS. Kathleen's coworkers say she is a huge asset in every endeavor she participates in. She's exceptionally easy to work with and very team-oriented. And she's knowledgeable and grounded, providing significant insights for projects she's involved with. So I want to thank Kathleen for her service as well. So I'd like to invite the Way to Go winners that are here up to take a picture.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. How are you? Thank you. Congrats.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm done.
All right, so turn it over to Commissioner DeBello.
All righty. Well, I am looking forward to, I attended last year the Freedom for Hunger with Valley Forge Tourism. It was an awesome event. I dig the cold into the kitchen to help cut up vegetables and tomatoes and stuff, so I'm sure we'll be participating.
I can do that. I just can't.
Yeah, so I look forward to being there with you tomorrow. I think we'll have, we'll have some fun while we're doing and supporting an amazing, amazing cause. So, as Commissioner Mccasian mentioned, we had National Night Out. Well, I think it started out as a National Night Out a few years ago and now turned into multiple nights out because of many communities that participate in these events. I think they're still going on throughout Montgomery County. It was, it was a great, great week, I'll say, because like my colleagues, we were kind of dividing conquer all over Montgomery County. I know I was in Rorshford, Addington, Montgomery Township. I know I'm forgetting.
Springfield.
Springfield, yep. So it's, it was good. It was really get out, it's fun to get out to the community, support our first responders, you know, the people of, I'll tell you what, the kids, watching the kids see the fire trucks climbing all over the equipment, I mean, it's just an aha. And hopefully, we see future firefighters or volunteers within these kids that maybe get inspired by being out at these events. But it was, they're great nights. And so if you haven't had the opportunity to shoot up, to go to one, I encourage in your community next year to stop by because it's a great way to support your community and also thank all our first responders and police as well. What else do we got called on? We had, oh, August 7th was National Purple Heart Day, which was last Thursday, week already. You may likely know that Purple Hearts are a warrant to American military personnel who are wounded during combat. Purple Heart recipients put their lives on the line for our freedoms, and they deserve our utmost respect. A quick bit of history about the Purple Heart. We honor on August 7th because on August 7th, 1782, George Washington created the badge of military merit. That was extremely, exactly the same as the Purple Heart, only three soldiers from the Revolutionary War earned this honor. But it was the first time the President created medals for the regular soldiers. The Modern Purple Heart Medal was adopted in 1932. Since then, almost 2 million Purple Hearts have been awarded. Three men have received Purple Hearts 10 times, and a dog who served in World War I was also awarded twice. The real number is far higher than 2 million. This does not prove war is before 1932. Some from World War I veterans receive, have received them retroactively. But this is, this is our nation's oldest military recognition, and I'm glad that it's continuing today as well. So many different things going on. I do want to recognize, there's a group here in Norristown called the Cottage Street Sports Club. So I want to honor our guest here today, Larry Shea of the Cottage Street Sports Club. Cottage Street has been a positive force in Norristown since 1989. They organize youth sports, art activities, and keep kids active in the community with neighborhood cleanups and much more. As many may know this, I'm a big proponent of youth sports. I've managed leagues, I've coached teams, but volunteered throughout the years. But, you know, sports equipment in itself is extremely expensive, and every year it gets even more expensive. So volunteer organizations like Cottage Street really make sports accessible for everyone. There are so many benefits for young people involved. It's healthy, it teaches teamwork, and it teaches hard work, but it also keeps our kids out of trouble. So we're really grateful to have an organization like this in Montgomery County. We actually have several in Montgomery County, but this in Norristown is doing amazing work. So I want to thank Larry and all the Cottage Street volunteers for the work that you do. I was actually, two weeks or three weeks ago, they had an awards night for kids, and I was able to stop in. And just seeing the kids receive awards for sportsmanship and all the activities that they, that they perform, and I think, is that your president in the club sit next to you?
Yeah.
Yep. You want to see a very impressive individual. He blew me away when I was there. This is, he's in his third year as president, if I remember.
Second.
Second year as president. And he runs a tight organization. He keeps everyone in check, and he makes sure that everyone participates and makes sure everyone is welcome. So again, I'd like to bring him up, but I want to recognize, you know, the group with a proclamation.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
We are Cottage Street Sports Club.
With that, we will move on to our first public comment period. This is just for today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, parties, and contracts. If you have any other comments, we'll get through the agenda items and come back to general comments after those. Are there any agenda items, comments? Go ahead.
Joe Gruney?
Just a quick on item F. So first, if you don't mind me saying, I thank all the Commissioners for coming to Glenside, for the Glenside Parade, the honoring of the, of the first responders.
Another guy was in prison in Chester County and got the word that Montgomery County is a place to come because they don't roust you out. So, if we're doing our regulations for our parks, maybe since it's now August, and we're talking about that, I think, in February, maybe there's some update on that because if there's anything about safety and security, if you go from that Elmwood Zoo, go downstream, that is a scary place when you see all that stuff down there. And if you're walking, I drove with my wife there, she didn't go through it, but I walked down and talked to those guys. And then, the last thing, just a quick one about the e-bike rule. Could you hold that sign up again?
Sure.
So, the question is, do we uniformly enforce regulations? So, if an illegal aliens in the county, and he's riding an e-bike on one of our trails, is he going to get, he, she, or it, going to get cited for that rule there? So, which rules do we enforce and which rules do the commissioners decide not to enforce? So, again, that's just in with this, and I was thinking about that. Finally, tomorrow is August fifteenth, which is VJ Day. It's also the end of World War II. So, God bless all of our World War II, if they're still alive, their families, we all have grandparents or whatever. But if you go to mass tomorrow, at least to the assumption, say a prayer for them because they, we're here because of the incredible things they did. So, I know that was off the topic, but thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Barb Farman. Barb?
On the general.
Okay. Move harder to the general. Anyone else?
Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will move on to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
I'm a commissioner.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any more to comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the minutes are approved. So, next we'll hear from Stephanie Tipton, our Deputy COO, on an amendment to the rules and regulations regarding our parks, trails, and historic sites.
Good morning. Presented for your consideration today are proposed amendments to Ordinance twenty-five dash two regarding rules and regulations for county parks, trails, and historic sites. As you guys know, I'm sure, Montgomery County's parks and trails welcome over three million visitors annually, and to ensure these spaces remain safe and accessible for all users, we are recommending updates to the parks' rules and regulations. The First Amendment clarifies the types of electric mobility devices permitted on county trails and specifies that electric bikes in particular must weigh no more than a hundred pounds, have a motor of no more than seven hundred and fifty watts, including fully operational pedals, and may not exceed fifteen miles per hour under motor power. The Second Amendment increases the maximum fine for violations of these rules and regulations from one hundred dollars to three hundred dollars. These changes reflect the county's commitment to balancing accessibility with safety and preserving the quality of shared public spaces. These regulatory changes are one piece of a broader public awareness and enforcement campaign that the county will be engaged in over the coming weeks and months to promote trail etiquette and safety. I respectfully request the board's approval of the amendments to Ordinance twenty-five dash two as presented, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Not necessarily direct to this, but I'm going to do a public service announcement along with this, since this is a very important topic that we're talking about, hunting trails. The kids that are, have these e-bikes or whatever, you know, we got to be, they're shooting out, like, they're darting out from all over the place, all over the public streets, you know. They don't even, I'm just saying, be careful because they shoot out from, not even at intersections, they just dart out, and they're kids. I mean, I'm not saying that they're, you know, doing it, just, you know, but I'm just putting it out there because this is important, that we're adding this, as a safety precaution on the trails. But I'm also saying that, you know, for everyone out there, you know, listening and watching this as well, or telling the friends and families, be careful and watch, always watch, you know, these kids because they just, they're learning, I guess, as far as traffic, I don't know, but just be careful because they, I've heard instances time after time about, I almost hit this kid on, he just darted out, I didn't even know where he came from. So, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, I would just add, it's, I mean, you make a good point in that it's for the safety of the riders and other people on the trail because in Delco, you may have seen, I think, two kids were killed recently riding scooters. And basically, these, you know, motors have gotten much faster and more capable in the last several years and, you know, to the extent that some people are trying to now use the trails as commuting, right, instead of taking seventy-six, which I understand the desire not to take seventy-six, but the trail is not the option. Funding SEPTA is the better alternative. No, so, you know, so that's why this is important, both for the people who are riding the devices, but then also everyone else on the trail.
And you'll see here, we will be, there will be more social media awareness campaigns coming out related to this, so just thanks to our comms team for putting all of that together.
Thanks. All right, so with that, is there a motion to approve the ordinance as described by Stephanie Tipton? So, moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any more to comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the amendment is approved. Moving on, we'll hear from Steve Forster, Director of Commerce, on a TEFR approval for Brinmar College.
Thank you, commissioners. Good morning. Before today is a request by Brinmar College, a nonprofit corporation, seeking a resolution approving the issuance of one or a series of tax-exempt revenue bonds totaling up to seventy million dollars. Brinmar College is a private, non-sectarian institution founded in eighteen eighty-five, situated on a hundred and twelve acre campus in Brinmar, Lower Marion Township, Montgomery County, and having approximately one thousand six hundred and seventy full-time students, of whom approximately one thousand four hundred and forty-seven are undergrad. The bonds to be issued will repay two earlier series of bonds, notably from twenty-ten and twenty-fourteen, along with a term note extended by PNC Bank. The bonds are to be issued by the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority and have been approved by the IDA pursuant to a TEFR hearing and resolution adopted July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. The hearing was properly advertised on the IDA website at least seven days in advance of the hearing. Because the refinancing is for a Montgomery County-based entity, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of nineteen eighty-two, or TEFR, requires approval by the highest elected official in the county where the funds are to be utilized. Approval of this bond issue will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Montgomery County by improving the college's balance sheet, extending the term of the debt, and making the college more fiscally sustainable, thus enabling the college to keep pace with its peer group by, for example, continuing to offer additional scholarships and maintain or increase enrollment. Neither the General Credit nor the Taxing Authority of Montgomery County have pledged this security for these bonds. Thus, the county takes no financial risk nor obligation in this transaction, and it does not impact the county's balance sheet in any way. I therefore request your approval of the resolution as presented by the solicitor approving the issuance of the bonds. Thank you for your consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Unfortunately, no. You can run for commissioner, but hopefully not against us.
Happy to answer afterwards.
I'll, yeah, Steve can stick around if you have questions, but is there a motion to approve resolution number one as described by Mr. Steve Forster?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. I'll give one board comment, which, just for everyone's clarity, this is not the county making a investment. In the college, the IDA essentially helps over the cost of borrowing for the college and many other institutions that apply, companies, nonprofits, it can be a range of entities within Montgomery County, and it allows us to put them in a better financial position. They get a better deal in terms of term of their loan, and, you know, it's one easy way that we can be supportive of the institutions within Montgomery County, especially when, you know, there's threats of Pell Grants for education institutions and student loan relief. I think we want to support our great institutions of higher learning, and this is one way we can do that. So, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the resolution is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on to commissioners' appointments to AI Advisory Council. Do we have a presentation or just make a motion? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the appointments as described in Resolution G two?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any more to comment? I'll just add, you know, as I mentioned in the opening comments, we've got a range of people from a wide range of backgrounds, academia, private sector, public sector. I'm really excited to bring them together to work on ways we can innovate here in Monco and do so responsibly. And, yeah, we're looking forward to getting assembled. And thank you to Stephanie for leading this effort and building this, you know, very impressive group. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sorry.
Aye? Okay. Okay, so it's all unanimous. The council appointments are approved. Moving on to an appointment of Amanda Gold to Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites, our board. Is there a motion to approve the appointment as described in Resolution G three? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any more to comment? I'll just add, you know, as I mentioned in the opening comments, we've got a range of people from a wide range of backgrounds, academia, private sector, public sector. I'm really excited to bring them together to work on ways we can innovate here in Monco and do so responsibly. And, yeah, we're looking forward to getting assembled. And thank you to Stephanie for leading this effort and building this, you know, very impressive group. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sorry.
Aye? Okay. Okay, so it's all unanimous. The council appointments are approved. Moving on to an appointment of Amanda Gold to Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites, our board. Is there a motion to approve the appointment as described in Resolution G three? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any more to comment? I'll just add that I know Amanda is someone who would bring impressive architectural experience to the board, especially in the realm of historic preservation. She's worked for twenty years in both the public and private sector on a lot of different preservation projects, so I'm glad to have her on our board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The appointment in Resolution G three is approved. Moving on to nomination of Lori Hefner to be appointed to the trustee of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Region to the Pennsylvania Opioid Misuse and Addiction Abatement Trust. Is there a motion to approve the nomination as described in Resolution G four?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any more to comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Resolution G four and the amendment are approved. Okay, moving on to the personnel list, we'll hear from Tony Brewer, our Chief Human Services Officer.
Good morning, commissioners. In front of you, you have the final copy of the Commission Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with a timestamp of ten twenty-one AM. All petitions have been reviewed and accounted for for your consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brewer?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any more to comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the personnel list is approved. Moving on to section I. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any more to comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the advertisement of bids and RFPs are approved. Moving on to section J, awards and contract. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, award, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any more to comment? I'll add one comment on the contract for today, which is that the county is investing in our training facility for first responders and law enforcement, and that's something we've been doing consistently. There are two items worth highlighting, which is that we'll be putting in some much-needed upgrades to the HVAC system and the roof at our training facility in Contra Hocken. So, that's something we hear a lot from law enforcement, it comes up at the Chiefs Association meetings, so we're making those improvements after this is approved. And in twenty twenty-four, for stats for everyone to know, they train nearly four thousand students, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight, from forty-eight different agencies. So, we do a lot of important work for municipalities across the county and even our neighboring counties. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the contracts and Exhibit B are approved. Moving on to section K, Southeast PA Regional Terrorism Task Force. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Terrorism Task Force on attached Exhibit C? So, moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any more to comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the awards and contract in Exhibit C are approved. So, we are at, any more to comment? Any comments?
Barb Farman.
Good morning. Not used to this being so quick. Appreciate it. Bart Farman, New Hanover Township. Oscar Penny from El Salvador was rearrested on August first after being released from the county jail despite facing multiple charges of sex crimes against children. He was arrested in Potstown, Western Montgomery. These arrests outside of the prison system put Monco citizens and law enforcement at grave risk. Quoting the Fox News article on July twenty-second, he was arrested by Potstown Police on charges including involuntary deviate sexual intercourse with a person less than sixteen years of age, involuntary deviate sexual intercourse with a child, two counts of indecent assault of a person less than thirteen years of age, two counts of corruption of minors by defendant age eighteen or above, and two counts of indecent assault without consent of the party, of the other party. The federal government's most important job is keeping U.S. citizens safe, and Homeland Security and IRS can work well with local law enforcement. They have an important job, and they are following policies and procedures. County government has the most important job of running the processes and procedures of fair elections. As a retired teacher, I have monitored many standardized tests. As a citizen that values the processes involved in scientific research and the variables, keeping the variables as small as possible, nowhere in process does adding more variables to a process like running elections make process more transparent and, in my opinion, compromises public trust. Multiple drop boxes, months-long ballot distribution and collection, multiple languages, I can see the challenge at the precinct level with in-person voting. see the challenge at the precinct level with in-person voting. Just like testing protocol, you only know who filled out the ballot 100% when they present themselves, and I believe that also the majority of people believe photo ID should be presented by the eligible voter. If we can't explain all of the ins and outs of voting and ballot collection, then we need to look at process and follow it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. Raju, Mayor, I'm sorry, I can't read the writing. Yes, please, you're next.
First of all, I'd like to say I've been in Montgomery County since kinder, first grade, kindergarten. I went to OJ Roberts High School. So, this is just a general, this is my first meeting. I went to college in Philadelphia. I've never been to one of these meetings. I've been in Montgomery County basically all through my high school and college years, and I just, you know, I would, this is not to attack, just the general things was that the cost of living is getting high, especially for seniors retired, you know, if your parents are retired, the cost of living could be a little higher because of property taxes. And some of the things I've noticed just driving around is that there's a lot of empty office spaces and corporate office spaces and restaurants, you know, that maybe we could try to bring some of, like, I used to go to LabCorp in Montgomery County, and that whole building was empty. I'm not sure who owns it, but we could try to bring back some of those small businesses. That would help the tax base. I just came here to, it was just to sit in on my first meeting, that's it.
Thank you for coming, and I'll just comment. Steve Forster, Director of Commerce, is doing a great job identifying all the sites in the county where we can support economic development and help people who want to start businesses or have facilities, you know, move in, so that's a big project that we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Pat DiPera?
Good morning, commissioners, and my name is Pat DiPera, and I am a retiree from the Economic and Workforce Development Program. I retired in 2008, and a few of my colleagues came before you back in March, I believe, yeah, it was March. I'm very nervous, I do not like public speaking, but this is so important to me that I wanted to do this. So, we came before you a year and a half ago, and we haven't heard anything back. We did receive a letter in March, the following month after, we asked for a cost of living raise, and at that time, the money was still not available. And I know that they were going to bring us up at one of the quarterly meetings, and again, we haven't received any written correspondence, you know, to that effect. So, I'm here once again to ask if that could please be considered. You know, we, I myself gave, I worked 31 years for the county, and a lot of other of my colleagues had, you know, also worked quite a few years, and I know they recently gave cost of living, I think it was to 170 people, and you were very pleased to do that. And not the cost of living, I meant the, what was that?
The minimum wage?
Yeah, the minimum wage, to $20 in some sense, and you're very proud of that. And I would wish that you could give other retirees a cost of living. Chester County gives it, Berks County gives it, Bucks County gives it. We are the only county that is not giving that. So, again, I respectfully ask if you could please reconsider and go back and look at the numbers. Okay? Thank you.
So, we just got a presentation on that at the Retirement Board, so we're actively in discussions and considering it. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, because I, several people have reached out to me making that same request, and I know as a board of commissioners, we're very supportive of all our retirees, and we're trying to look at how we could do it. What you mentioned about the quarterly meeting that just happened, where we have, our actuary goes through, and they look at the whole retirement, you know, system and where we are with money and so on and so on, and then there's formulas that they have to apply that's driven by what the state has in place, and we have to be, we're not getting into too much detail, but we have to be above, the system has to, the results have to come out 80% or better, and it looks over a five-year period, a rolling five-year period. And we're still trying to deal with, in 2022, I believe it was, there was a significant drop in the retirement system, basically the fund, and that keeps playing into this formula, and we came out this year slightly above 78%. So, we can't use the pension system to actually provide a cost of living until we get that up over 80%. We are talking to see if there's an alternative way for us to be able to do something this year where that hopefully next year, we would be able to score, because we're meeting in 2026, and we may be able to come out of that where we'll be 80% in that range where we need to be, which is regulated by the state. So, we're trying, you know, all of us came in the first year, last year, we all agreed that we wanted to support a cost of living raise, but we were limited in what we could do, and we're really trying to figure out what we could do this year to get us to that point.
And if I could just add, we also have a new controller who has extensive experience around pensions, so glad that we're partnering with him to think through, how do we do this? You know, I, my dad's on a fixed income public servant, I see what he struggles with to, you know, to just make, you know, his retirement last him the month, so please know that this board is taking the request seriously, but to Commissioner DeBello's point, there are limitations in our ability to do it at this moment, so, but we are working with the controller and those that help us from a retirement perspective, think through what are some alternatives that we can look at. So, no guarantees, but I want you all to know that we are serious about it.
They did a good job speaking.
Question, Lutweiler, Preston?
Hello, I'm Preston Lutweiler, Limerick Township, and I didn't know what I would talk about today, but hearing you talk about SEPTA at the beginning prompted me to get up and say something about SEPTA. I love SEPTA, I worked in Bryn Mawr for 29 years. I love the R5, now the Paoli line, I can't believe that they're talking about shutting that down. That was what created the main line, so it just makes no sense that this region is talking about decimating its public transportation system. My former state senator, Katie Muth, recently made a comment about this in support of funding of SEPTA, and pointed out that 46% of the revenue that comes into the state comes in from southeastern Pennsylvania. When I hear people, senators from other parts of the state complaining that they're not getting enough of the pie, it just boggles my mind that they can't be thoughtful enough and realize the contribution that's coming from southeastern Pennsylvania to sustain public transportation in southeastern Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, I was redistricted out of Katie Muth's district, and I now have a state senator who is voting for a solution which involves taking money out of the capital fund for SEPTA and public transportation and putting it into the operating fund. As managers of the county budget, I think you recognize that that's irresponsible, and that is not no solution. So, I'll just add my voice to the importance of properly funding SEPTA and funding it its operating budget through state revenue.
Thank you.
Jay Lee?
Hello, I am Jay Lee, a community organizer from Lansdale. Today, I want to speak on behalf of community leaders, volunteers, organizers, residents, and immigrant communities that have come together and have worked hard in local communities throughout the county under the commitment for safety, justice, and protecting the people who make our communities whole. Montgomery County has made some important changes in the past few months. County's correctional facility no longer hold, no longer honor ICE detainer requests without valid judicial warrant, and there is an internal policy to bar county employees from honoring the requests and sharing citizens' details with ICE without judicial warrant. These are victories and important steps toward creating a safer community in Montgomery County, but we can do more. So, I ask commissioners, this is an opportunity to take the lead in setting a new standard for protecting immigrant communities at the local level in Pennsylvania. On top of our conversations with our boroughs, townships, municipal police, again, we urge you to pass a formal welcoming policy resolution, one that actually spells out our protections, our community needs, but does not yet have in writing. Right now, there is no policy that clearly prohibits leasing of use or use of county facilities to ICE or any other entity carrying out federal immigration enforcement. While Commissioners McIsa and Wyder stated your commitment through op-ed published in May, there is yet no formal policy that bars the signing of 287G agreements that prohibit assisting or conducting immigrant reinforcement. This policy should also address not retaining a resident's citizenship or immigration status unless required by law, and all subsequent data released should be in compliance with federal law. The lack of these provisions creates uncertainty as it erodes trust and discourages residents, many of them longtime neighbors, using county services or participating fully in civic life. A formal resolution would explicitly ban leasing facility to ICE prohibiting 287G agreement and preventing the collection and storage of citizenship or immigration status unless required by law. This isn't about federal politics, it's about local safety and dignity. It's about making sure our community is governed by consistent, transparent rules that protect everyone who calls it home. During the Commissioners Board meeting on May 15, your own solicitor stated that internal policy could be adopted via resolution, doing so to provide greater permanence and transparency to the community. Thank you so much.
Ann Harrington?
I just want to congratulate Larry Shade and his organization for wonderful job they do in Norristown. He's very much appreciated. A lot of people say they care. He puts it into action and does things to help the community, especially children. Thank you, Larry.
I'd like to double down on Barb, this is a great, short meeting, so it's really pretty interesting. So, a couple of things real quick. First, once again, it was wonderful to have our commissioners in Abington on the 4th of July, there was a big fire in Abington, so they came and they thanked our law enforcement and our first responders. And then, on night out, we celebrate our law enforcement and our first responders with celebrations in Abington, and I know throughout the community, well deserved, and everybody loves to see it. And then I read in a newspaper how two of our commissioners are undermining our most basic first responders and law enforcement, which are customs and immigration officers. They are enforcing the laws that are on the books that must be enforced. I'm a retired airline pilot and 23 years as a Marine. You cannot believe how many countries I've been to. Everywhere I went, I followed the immigration and customs, whether I was coming from the Philippines into Japan, or whether I was flying a Delta airplane down to Dominican Republic or to St. Lucia. There's not one time I would even consider running through or circumventing it. First, I'd get fired by Delta. I wouldn't get graduated by Neil McIsa, okay? It's nothing less than we should expect in our own country. So, for our customs and immigrations officers, God bless you, Montgomery County enforces and supports all of the great work you do to keep our country and our county clean, clean and safe, sorry. And I'm just wondering how our commissioners can stand up and say what a great job and how important our law enforcement's are, people are, on the 4th of July, and on the 5th of July undermine them and put poor people in Lansdale at risk. Who's calling up the victims of that El Salvadoran illegal criminal who was in our country, was released, and then committed crimes again? Who's calling those victims up and applying and apologizing for them? So, this is what I recommend. We need an ICE liaison officer to work with our new immigration staff, making 100 grand a year, so we can make sure that everything in Montgomery County is in full compliance and in support with our law enforcement officers. The second thing is, we have to be clear, we either support the law, then we enforce the law, or we don't. If you don't like a national policy on immigration or on customs, resign as a commissioner, run for a federal office, and then change the law, do it the right way, not undermining our great law enforcement officers on Wednesday when you say you support them on Tuesday. Thank you.
If you're gonna move on to Zoom, Marilyn Muir. Marilyn, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Marilyn Muir, Lower Safford Township. I'm making a comment in reference to the food market in West Norriton Township that was raided on July 16th. I just wanted to say that all 14 individuals that were arrested were here illegally, and six of those were Mexican nationals. Also, the raid occurred at a location that was previously visited by ICE, and they had been warned of a potential return, so they totally ignored the warning and just went about their business, and now everybody's surprised that they got arrested. Illegal immigration, those people are criminals, and it can't be tolerated, and who knows what else they were doing? Some of them were just working at the store, but clearly, you know, we don't know what they're doing when they're not at the store. Somebody's bringing drugs into the, and distributing drugs into our county. There's lots of deaths and crime going on, and somebody's doing it. So, to say these are our neighbors, our friends, it just is not, that's not an accurate description of them. Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue on Zoom, the floor is Adam Dammey. Marilyn, can you hear us?
Hi, this is Kelly.
Hi, this is Kelly.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to come here today to actually question the right being allowed specifically by Commissioner DiBello. He repeatedly calls undocumented immigrants illegals, which is an extremely hateful way to refer to human beings and shows a complete disregard to what's happening, not only to them, but to the immigrant community as a whole. He talks about doing things the legal way and never questions what that even means. I want to remind you that slavery, Jim Crow, and segregation were all legal until it wasn't. Securing asylum is a misdemeanor, not a crime. So the fact that he calls undocumented immigrants illegals is factually inaccurate. He talks about celebrating veterans and what they've done to build the United States of America, but refuses to acknowledge the atrocities that they've committed against others, prior to non-white people, if there were orders of leadership during that time. Let's not forget about the fact that US military is also responsible for de-silversing all the countries that immigrants are fleeing from to try to have a chance at a peaceful future in America. But asylum terrorists are also the ones who rounded up people of Japanese origin during World War II, and just because that was legal doesn't make it right, which is why those victims received reparations. It's clear that he learned nothing from the Black Lives Matter movement that called out the constant support of police officers despite the repeated offenses against predominantly black communities. People in leadership positions like police, the military, and commissioners should be held to a higher standard than regular individuals. Police shouldn't be allowed to hunt down people based on their skin color, and ICE shouldn't be allowed to terrorize immigrants. I don't want leadership like him to say whatever they want and burdened all their ignorant and racist people to commit crimes against populations of people that are already oppressed. And Shade, in the last meeting, that people are impersonating ICE, and he spent most of the time afterwards making fun of my reference to World War II. The fact that you can't see the parallels of multivac individuals rounding up people of color and sending them to camps in two different periods of times, stellar arc in history shows, and a literacy to critical thinking. He shouldn't be allowed to call undocumented immigrants illegals unless he embraces the titles of being a zebenaphobe and racist to his credentials.
The last person is Karamina Taylor.
I wasn't really planning on speaking today, but I wanted to give some context of why I am speaking. Three weeks ago, I was hit by a car as a pedestrian at the corner of DeKalb and Lafayette Street, and it really, I'm lucky, I'm blessed, I walked away. I could have been hurt greater, but God saved me. And since that time, I really have been thinking about where we are as a county and where we are as a country. And listening to the comments today, and quite honestly, some of the comments by the gentleman in the room, just reminded me that we have to get back to civility. I want to put a pause on that. We have to get back to civility. What's going on here? We have come to a time where we insult people openly. For what? You don't have to respond. We've come to talk about issues that we have, but what are we doing about it besides arguing at a meeting? We're at an inflection point in our country and in our county. I grew up here. I have never seen the disrespect and the incivility of having a conversation with people. Life is short. I could have died, and I could have been severely injured. So I'm going to continue to move forward in civility of everyone, because everyone is a human being. We need to stop with the racial baiting, because you don't know when you're going to live your next moment. And I call everybody in this room to ask yourself, if you had a crisis, or if you had a moment where you could have died, can you live with yourself how you have talked to people and how you have treated people? For what? Again, you don't have to respond. I call on this county commission leadership to really engage in a conversation countywide to talk about civility. That's what you can do in your leadership role. That's how you change the tone and tenor of this county. That's how you change the tone and tenor of how we treat each other in Pennsylvania. I have traveled all across this state. I've been to rural Pennsylvania, been the southeast region, I mean southwest region, the northwest, the middle part, and the northeast, and we are siloed as a state. And I go into those spaces, and I say, no matter what, I'm a Pennsylvanian. I may not live in Uniontown, I may not live in McKeen County, but I care about people that live in McKeen County. So I just want to call on everyone to civility. I'm going to be coming to meetings regularly, and I want to keep this theme up, because we're all human beings and we deserve respect, and there's no need to keep shining the light on something if you're not going to do something back to make it better. Thank you.
That's it for public comment.
All right. Any closing comments?
Just real quick. I think, as we're going into the third quarter, we should maybe have a finance update from our CFO on upcoming meetings. Also, I want to, you know, we recently had some mosquito spraying in Montgomery County. Many people reached out to me regarding that. Trying to understand, you know, a little bit more about it, getting information, you know, is it the county's responsibility, or if it's the state's responsibility? It's kind of one of those gray areas, like it seems like, you know, who's... So I want to be able to, maybe in the future, we should have some kind of presentation about that so people understand what's actually happening, what's being used, because, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to not support people with concerns that, you know, we're out there just openly spraying chemicals, so I think that we should at least educate, you know, our community a little bit more so they have an understanding of what's happening and why, why we're doing, why it's either the state or the counties doing what we're doing. And also, I want to reiterate again, I, yesterday, it was yesterday, I dropped off eight bags of backpacks full of school supplies, and I want to reiterate, Commissioner Winder mentioned it in the start of the meeting, encourage everyone, I said during an interview that, you know, while you're out getting school supplies for, for your kids, if we can pick up an extra notebook, or extra pack of pens, or extra battery erasers, or even disinfectant wipes, tissues, anything, just pick up an extra one and please donate it to, to the county. There's 11 different drop spots throughout the county, I believe they're listed on our website. And, you know, we have, we have kids in need throughout the county, and it's just, when you see the amount of stuff that's come in so far and already been distributed, but, you know, we're still going to August 22nd, so anything you can do to help out with school supplies would be very much appreciated.
Any comments?
I do have comments. So one, I want to just thank everyone for taking the time. I know 10 o'clock is oftentimes hard on a Thursday in the middle of the, the work week. You know, just, I reflect a lot on, and Karamina, you know, appreciate your perspective. I do reflect a lot on the moment that we're in as a country, and I think oftentimes about, you know, my 104-year-old grandmother who, you know, grew up in the segregated South, and she died last year, and I think about the lessons that she, she taught me as I was being raised in Montgomery County. And what I've been seeing just out in public, what I've been seeing on social media, is certainly not the best of Montgomery County. And, you know, I reflect a lot on, you know, how we show up as friends and neighbors. I oftentimes spend a lot of time in the comment section on Facebook, right? I'm sure that many of you do as well. People calling me a DEI hire, people talking about my colleague, the Indian guy, part of the caste system. But that's okay. We signed up, it's not okay, but we signed up to take the punches. But I think we do have to reflect on how we show up to our friends and neighbors, especially in this moment. Everyone's just trying to survive. For the most part, everyone's just trying to survive. And I want to make it clear that I support law enforcement. My father was the deputy wardman at Graterford Prison and served the Department of Corrections for more than four decades. You can live up to your values and think about how you treat people, right, and still support law enforcement. It's not either or. So I'm just calling, you know, the civility part, that's the perfect word for this moment. How do we bring back the civility? We can disagree, right? We can have thoughtful dialogue on those disagreements, but let's think about how we treat each other. Let's think about how we talk about those that might look differently than us. Let's think about how we talk about those who love differently than us or pray differently than us. So I'm going to continue to model that good behavior, and I hope that I'll influence all of you to do better and think about how we preserve what's, what's great about Montgomery County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll cover it on a couple of things. First, I'm going to say our next meeting's September 4th, so this is the last of the year, so we hope everyone has had a great summer and getting ready for off to school. You know, in terms of the general tenor and demeanor, the conversations, I think, you know, it's unfortunate when we take basic actions to uphold people's rights, that would be characterized as somehow not supporting public safety. And I'll tell you one thing about law enforcement and, you know, discussions I've had with members of, you know, whether it's local police, whether it's the county, or at the federal level, I think they do the work every day to keep people safe while protecting constitutional rights, right? They understand the Fourth Amendment, they understand that there are obligations upon them, including obtaining warrants before engaging in searches and seizures, search or seizures, and that's part of the job, is to make sure that, you know, we have a country that, you know, if there's an instance in which someone's liberty is being taken away, that they have due process. And the actions that have been taken in local governments have been in response to a lack of due process that is occurring in agencies that, you know, have engaged in searches or seizures without warrants. And if you actually talk to local law enforcement, they know every day how easy it is to obtain that if you have probable cause and any, you know, any modicum of evidence. And so, you know, I think it's very unfortunate when people politicize the hard work that law enforcement does to keep people safe, including, you know, the prosecutors, the judges, who make difficult decisions about bail every day, because we don't have a system in the country where you can just make an accusation and incarcerate someone indefinitely. Thankfully, we do not have that. And so, we have judges who make those decisions alongside, you know, hearing from either a public defender or otherwise, and a prosecutor, and we have to let them do their jobs. And, you know, I think you, somebody mentioned the newspaper, I think that's a generous term for the outlets that you were discussing, because they don't have an understanding of the Fourth Amendment or how law enforcement works. So not to give the wonky perspective, this is the difference you should see, but, you know, I think, you know, we're doing everything that we can, and everyone should know we're doing everything we can to support public safety while also protecting individual rights, and that's part of the work that we have to do in government. So, you know, that's on that topic. But, you know, I'm thankful for my colleagues. We had a unanimous vote on, on everything today, so we're collaborating every day on the issues that our county is facing, and many of them are not partisan at all, whether it's making sure we run government efficiently, whether we're invested in public safety, whether we're keeping our trails safe. So we're doing the job, and that's, you know, that's what we're here to do, and we're all doing that together. So any other comments? Upcoming meeting is September 4th, 10 AM here in the boardroom. Last is their motion to adjourn August 14, 2025, this meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners.
Please.
Moved by Commissioner DiBello, seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We'll move on to Salary Board, please. Is Controller to join us?
You're rude, you're very rude.
Okay, so we will move on to Salary Board. You can, this is a, this is a short meeting on the Salary Board. Do we have any public comment? Okay, so we will hear from our TQ and Research Officer on the Salary Board list.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It's a six-page document dated August 30, I'm sorry, 13th, 2025, with a timestamp of 10:21 a.m. All positions have reviewed and accounted for, for your consideration.
Great. Is there motion to approve the August 14th Salary Board presentation? That was given by Mr. Tony Breder, Human Research, Chief Human Research Officer.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Controller Hart. Any board comment? I'll make one comment, which is that there are many 911 telecommunicators on the Salary Board today, and I want to congratulate them. They're moving on to the next step and being promoted. These are really hard jobs, taking those calls. We get thousands every year, and there can be a higher turnover rate, but we're actually seeing a lower vacancy rate now and people staying on board. So thanks to DPS and Brian and the whole team for doing a great job recruiting and taking care of folks on the team, and, you know, we thank you for all their, their work and service. Any other board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I wrote this as a...
Thank you.
Is there motion to adjourn the August 14th meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
Please.
Moved by Commissioner DiBello. Any second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.[1732.83]
...